This meeting is called to order. Now, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Romero, would you please lead us?
Everybody ready? Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every change just as far.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Sir, can you approach your mic when you call me through?
Yes, sir. I apologize for that. You remind me that at every meeting. Sorry. Roll call. We're all here except for Mr. Uzun. And do we all have acknowledgement of the attendance record? Have anybody received that?
Yes.
Everybody agreed with it?
Yes. Motion to approve the agenda is this.
Great.
Second.
I don't think it's an item, is it?
No, you have to approve the agenda.
Okay. All of us in favor? No, it's not an agenda. It's the attendance roster.
Okay, attendance roster. Do you have it? Yes?
Yeah, we all have it. It's all good. Which is a question. I didn't say do it.
All right.
Make a motion.
That's correct.
All right. Now, the agenda. Anybody received the agenda?
Yes.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Let's see. Public comments. Are there any public comments at this moment on items not on the agenda? Please speak forward now. No public comments. All right, consent item number one. Regular planning. Commission minutes for September the fourteenth.
Chair, I went through the minutes. They appear to be accurate, so a motion for its approval.
There's a motion. There's a second. All of us in favor? Aye. Aye? Right. All right, item number two. Business items. We have a presentation from a representative of our attorney.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jill Tremblay with Bass, Bestin, Krieger here tonight. Tonight's agenda item is a recommendation of adopt to adopt resolution number 2015-12 recommending to the City Council amendments to chapters 5.96 and 17.11 of the Callexico Municipal Code, which would prohibit cannabis dispensaries, cannabis manufacturers, cultivation, and the delivery of cannabis in the city. In March 2012, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1143, which added to the Callexico Municipal Code, Chapter 5.96, and Article 10 of Chapter 17.11, which prohibit medical marijuana distribution facilities in the city. But the current code, while it does prohibit the distribution facilities, in other words dispensaries, it does not specifically prohibit other medical cannabis uses, such as planting, growing, harvesting, drying, storing, processing, or delivery, which is also called mobile dispensaries. Recently, the California Legislature adopted a couple different assembly bills and a Senate bill, which together are called the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which I'll refer to as the Act for the remainder of the presentation, which comprehensively regulates medical marijuana. The Act recognizes and preserves that preserves local control to regulate or ban medical cannabis cultivation, transportation, and distribution. It also confirms and clarifies that in addition to the complete land use control over retail dispensaries recognized in the City of Riverside case, municipalities also have the power to regulate or ban cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana. While the Act does allow the cities to regulate or ban cultivation or distribution or dispensaries within their borders, it also requires some localing-enabling legislation to accomplish this, which is usually a zoning regulation, which is what we're recommending or what the staff is proposing that the commission recommends tonight, and also regulatory scheme or ban. So if the city chooses to regulate the activities comprehensively, it has to adopt an overlay of local regulatory standards. And if the city, the reason that we had to get this on the agenda pretty quickly is that if the city doesn't have anything on the books as of March 1st, 2016, either regulating or completely banning these types of land uses, then the city will only be subject to state law on the issue. So staff has looked into this issue and has determined that cultivation, transportation, and distribution of marijuana can create problems relating to public health, safety, crime, other environmental issues, and energy consumption. Marijuana uses can create nuisance activity, such as loitering and criminal activity in business and residential districts. And mobile delivery can also create issues as well, including issues with law enforcement, questions of patient qualification, and other risks relating to the use of large sums of cash for mobile transactions. Since the federal laws still ban medical marijuana, the different businesses that are involved in dispensing or cultivation, they have to do all of their operations in cash, so that can become a problem as far as security and law enforcement is concerned. There's also an issue with noxious odors and moisture within the facilities can create mold and structural damage. Also, equipment used to grow medical marijuana indoors can be a fire risk due to electrical hazards. And inadequate ventilation also can lead to chemical contamination within structures. So at this time, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council a complete ban on medical marijuana distribution facilities, marijuana cultivation, and marijuana transportation. So the city's, staff is recommending the complete ban. The other option for the city would be to regulate medical cannabis dispensaries. Some of the areas that could be regulated would be limiting the number of them, having separation requirements, limiting the use of zoning, other security requirements, hours of operation and the like. In addition, regulation of medical cannabis cultivation. There has, a few cities now are looking at a complete ban. There is one in California, the City of Live Oak, which has successfully defended its total ban on medical marijuana cultivation. Other cities are looking into allowing it. Some require it to be only indoors. Other cities look at limiting the number of plants. But as I said before, if the city doesn't make any regulation or ban on cultivation, then as of March 1st, 2016, then only the state law will control. So the city is looking to be in accordance with the law and also ban the distribution and cultivation and delivery. So the third item is the regulation of cannabis delivery. Mobile delivery, as I said earlier, can create issues for cities because of the transition and delivery of the medical marijuana, in addition, large sums of cash that are moved. So the city is looking into a local delivery dispensary ban. And the state law is a little bit unclear on this issue. It does not necess, it does not in the text of the state law say that the city must adopt either a ban or regulation as of March 1st, 2016, but in abundance of caution, we, the City Attorney's Office recommends that the city either ban or regulate medical cannabis delivery prior to that date. So that concludes my report. Again, the city staff is recommending the adoption of the resolution, which would recommend to City Council amendments to chapters 5.96 and 17.11 of the Callexico Municipal Code, which would prohibit cannabis dispensaries, cannabis manufacturers, and cannabis cultivation within the city. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any.
Now, why are we, or why are you guys picking Riverside to compare to the studies that were done?
The...
Is it Riverside County or Riverside City?
The reference to Riverside is a case.
Okay.
It's not actually, I mean, the City of Riverside did regulate cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana, and then the court found that that was in their ability to do.
Another question I have is if, has anybody done studies on financial impacts, benefits from having a dispensary?
I believe that staff has looked into that. Typically, the benefits would be if the city adopted a measure to tax these type of uses, then the city could get perhaps a substantial sum of money, which would be used primarily, I would assume, to counteract whatever negative effects might occur in the city.
Now, has staff looked into, has staff looked into any negative recourse of having dispensaries in the city?
The staff has looked into the issue, and as far as we've seen from the City Attorney's Office, the main problems with cultivation, transportation, and distribution are safety, the crime issue, also the public health with water and air quality, energy consumption, other environmental issues.
Now, can we approve or look into dispensaries but not letting them grow, or do they go hand in hand?
They can be separated, but the city has a current ban on dispensaries in their zoning code. So what this regulation is looking to do is to expand that to mobile dispensaries and also place a ban on cultivation within the city.
I was talking to somebody, and somebody told me that they're bussing this stuff in from San Diego right now?
Oh, I'm not, I can't comment on that.
And they dispense it in El Centro, I think? Yes?
That's what I was told.
So they have a dispensary in El Centro then?
I think they do. I saw on the paper a while back.
So they're making all this money and we're not getting none of that cake?
Well, we don't know how much money they're making.
Can staff look into that?
Yeah, I'm not sure about El Centro. I don't believe, I don't believe they have a tax measure, but... Yeah, and I don't know how long they've had that regulation on the books.
Because I mean, I don't know what environmental impact growing the marijuana would have, but I mean, looking at it as a financial stance and the city being as broke as it is, maybe bringing dispensaries into Callexico wouldn't be a bad idea. They're gonna do it anyways. They're buying in El Centro. Why not bring that revenue to Callexico and put in like a tax type of revenue thing where the city's gonna get some money out of it?
Right, some cities are looking into that. Most of them that I've had experience with are looking at the complete ban, just because they believe that the negative effects will outweigh the positive and that they'll end up having to hire more police and increase security, also deal with, the odor is a big issue that comes up, so that's with the cultivation, and that's why a lot of, or the cities that are looking at regulating it, they want to, typically keep it indoors or keep it small, which would not generate the tax dollars.
Would that create jobs?
Um, I, it's possible. I mean, you would have to hire people to work at the facilities and...
I'm just saying, Imperial County's got the highest unemployment rate, the highest probably rate in this. I don't use this stuff, but you know, if it brings work and money into the, into the City of Callexico, I mean, I don't know, something to look at. You guys may agree or disagree with me.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Vazquez?
Thanks, Bob. Your comments are in the future. Those could be amendments to what we have already in the books, and I believe that's what we're up, you know, it's up to vote on, either amendments or the complete ban.
Right, we're making a, the commission's making a recommendation to City Council, so the regulation wouldn't necessarily go on the books. The Planning Commission is just making their recommendation for what they believe City Council should do.
Thank you. Ms. Felix, you have a comment?
Um, Mark, did, yeah, did we go out to the public for public input at all? Was this advertised?
No, there was no, this is not a public hearing. There was no indication that this should be a public hearing.
Uh, no, I know, but it's making an amendment to the existing ordinance or section with our...
No, it's, it's...
To our municipal code or what is it?
No, the council already prohibited.
Prohibited. So it's just an amendment to the council?
No, it's, it's everything that has to do with planning for the recommendation of the council.
Yeah, I know, but was it advertised that out for the, for public input? That's what I'm just asking.
I don't think, we don't have to, that's what I'm saying.
We don't have to, even though it was, it was an amendment. I thought it was.
This...
In 2012, it was an issue for the council.
Right.
And there was a lot of deliberation going on.
They did a complete ban in 2012, right?
That's, that's correct. But this...
It's just an addition to...
This agenda was published, correct?
As a public hearing item or as a...
No, just notice to the public.
As a notice to the public?
I don't believe it was. You know, this, this item was given to me, and so we were asked to put it on the agenda.
And did the agenda go out to the public?
Well, it was posted. Is that what you mean? It was put on the website and, yeah, it was posted. Yes. Is that what you meant? So it was publicized.
This is a public hearing.
This is a question?
Yes.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't indicated that we... What was that question?
This...
She asked if it was a public.
Well, this is a public meeting, so it has to be.
It was posted.
But it doesn't have to be in the newspaper. It could be posted out there, and that's good enough, right?
And it's also been on the website.
Correct.
Yeah, it's been on the website.
It's not like other items that we actually put in the paper.
Well, that's a public hearing.
You know.
Oh, I see where it's going. I see where it's going.
Like the sign ordinance, we put it in the paper.
Oh, okay.
No, but like when we do a public hearing, we give, we receive comments from the public, either for or against. But I, I don't, I'm not familiar with what constitutes for it to be a public...
When we have to do it.
The legal motion to change or amend.
Well, we're not, well, it depends what the Planning Commission does.
Exactly.
Right now, it's, the recommendation is not necessarily change anything. It's just to go another step forward to what council has...
And recommend to council.
To recommend, and that's all.
And at that point, they can put in the public hearing.
Yes.
Right?
When it goes to council.
Yes, can we take a five-minute break so I can double check on this?
Okay, all right. Five-minute break. It is five till seven.
Okay, thank you for the brief break. But we can proceed with this as a business item, so we can move forward with comments or if anyone wants to make a motion, we can move forward.
Mr. Miguel, I think we got a comment?
Romero.
Romero.
I heard Miguel.
I said, Mr. Romero.
Is there a Miguel all over here?
I know, Miguel Romero.
Do you have any more comments?
Um, no.
Chair, and with all due respect, comments from Commissioner Jung. I too very much believe that we should have some form of economic development for the City of Callexico, but at the same time, I don't think that this is, this is us for to decide. Right now, this agenda item is more consistent with what the council had approved last year, or three years ago.
Three.
And it's just to move forward on it. If there's gonna be any amendments to anything, that would have to be done by the council themselves. Again, this is just a follow-up action that if planning does, does not act in giving a recommendation to the City Council, if it be banned or being regulated, then the state will take over and somebody can appeal to the state. In that regard, I do motion for the approval for the recommendation by staff.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second. All of us in favor?
All right.
Aye. Abstention?
I'll abstain.
Abstain? Okay. So the motion passed? Yes, three.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, three. Motion passed.
Is that what you need? In so move, do we need to motion for the approval of the resolution?
Yes, let's also do that, please.
An amendment?
No.
Yes.
See, resolution. The number's not here, but...
No, 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 she's picked some, she's picked something up.
I believe it's 2015-12.
Where's, 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 where's?
It should be in the back.
You picked something that I didn't pick up. Oh, it's amendment on the language. There it is. Then, then also motion for the adoption of the resolution recommending to the City Council amendments to chapters 5.96 and 17.11 of the Callexico Municipal Code prohibiting cannabis dispensaries, cannabis manufacturers, cultivation, and the delivery of cannabis in the city.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? One abstention, Mr. Yeh. Motion passed. Okay.
I would hope that the county would pick this thing up.
I am.
The county. You got plenty of firm now.
And water.
And water.
All right, so we're done with the business items. Information, informational items? Mr. Vazquez?
Just wanted to inform the commission that the temporary signage workshop will be...
Temporary, oh, temporary signage, yeah.
Temporary signage workshop will be January 11th.
Is that the...
No, the permanent, now we just need to do the temporary signage workshop.
When do we have that permanent?
Did we finish the permanent?
I thought it was continued.
I thought it was continued. Yeah, we did.
You did? The permanent one?
Yeah.
Yeah, but nothing came of it. I mean, I was here, Mr. Romero was here, and I think...
You were here.
We were both here. I think people left more confused than when they walked in than when they left.
I, I think you need to, I think to me, it's continued. I don't... But isn't, is this the same date as a regular Planning Commission meeting? Because you're referring to this as a temporary, as a public workshop.
Yes, I believe it workshop, it is. I believe it was something like that.
The meetings are at 6:30. So if you're gonna have it on the same day...
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, the last one, we did it on a Tuesday when the City Council did not meet. That way, it was more transparent that this was not a meeting, or that was not a meeting.
It was more informal.
So I guess that would be maybe on the 12th? Because the first council meeting would be, well, you have to find out first, because sometimes it'll, it'll, instead of meeting on the first Tuesday after the new year, they might wait for another week. But if they don't meet on the 12th, I would, I would suggest meeting on the 12th. If anybody else is available.
Okay, would you let us know?
We can check, yeah, we can check if those meetings are...
And was there, wasn't there a conflict also with the times, Jason, that you said most, most of the merchants couldn't make it because of the time conflicts?
Well, if you're gonna have it five o'clock, you can't have it at five, because I mean, you have a lot of people that close at five, and how are they supposed to get here by five o'clock?
So six?
Like yourself, can you leave your store and come here at five? I think that's why you can come...
The majority would not be able to, right?
Seven, maybe?
Maybe seven. I mean, 6:30, 7:00, because you're pushing the time, but you know, that's usually when most of the merchants downtown don't close till seven or eight. But if you're gonna get most of them, and I think the temporary sign's gonna affect a lot of the downtown businesses, so I would push for 7:30 or eight even.
Wow.
Because you gotta, minimum seven. That way, you give people a chance to come in and maybe close a little bit early if it's a slower day. You know, you do down, you do business downtown, so you see how the traffic is and you see how your, what time your neighbors close. And I think they're the ones that are more prone for the temporary sign, because they wanna have the loners out there and, and put specials up and whatnot, opposed to the people on Imperial Avenue that really don't put up too many banners or temporary signs. Or they do. But also, you gotta remember, being January 11th or 12th, you're going into their busy season, because a lot of the offices is their tax season. So maybe pushing it to seven.
Well, for retail, isn't it slowed down because of the Christmas holiday has already passed?
Yeah.
Yes, but then most of the people that came here are people that own like tax services, and those are the ones with the banners, with the flags. Income tax, this, that. You see what I'm saying? You have, now with the temporary, you have a mixture of people that offer like a, Russell was one of them. He, he puts a flag up in front of this thing where it says auto-registration. It might be slow for him for the registration thing, but then you had a couple of people that own tax services. So now that's when everybody starts getting their, their DB2s and they start filing taxes, and you're coming into their busy season.
But if we give them ample of time for them to schedule, you know, work with their schedules or let, post something on their business, they'll be closing on that day, one hour earlier.
See how many of them show up, because...
But you would need a, again, publicized with Spanish and English.
Exactly. And then you would need somebody to go out and actually hand out these flyers to people again and make, and maybe do it like a week before, because if you do it any time before then, they'll forget about it. Most of them, we handed out some flyers, and most of them just, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll go," and they never showed up.
Well, I guess seven would be okay. After seven, after seven o'clock, seems like it's gonna start rather late.
Very agree. Seven would be good.
Which day was that that you recommended?
The 12th. The twelfth.
Okay.
And you'll let us know?
Yes.
Time.
Either through email or--
All right.
And, and it wouldn't be a bad idea that when you do let us know by email, that you attach the announcements--
Flyer, okay.
The flyers.
Yeah.
So this way, each one of us can forward them to everybody else.
Um, suggestion, the bid, I think, has a email address. You might wanna email all the people on the bid, because that's gonna cover most of your businesses downtown and on Imperial Avenue.
Who's the, who's the chair right now of the?
Um, Mark Colaway.
No bid.
No bid.
Mark Colaway.
Is it Mark Colaway? Then he or Lana Lopez would have--
'Cause there's only two--
Most of those contacts.
There's only two bid commissioners.
Ah, only two?
I think, ah, Julia might have the list of emails.
Rosalyn may have it also.
Or Ross.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we just need to make sure that we distribute it to them so they can forward it on.
Staff comment?
Mark, anything?
No. No? Are we having a meeting scheduled? Our next meeting will, is that on schedule?
There should be a meeting coming up on the twenty eighth.
There should be one?
Oh, there is gonna be one?
Yeah, yes. We have a billboard project for you.
All right.
All right.
On the what?
A billboard.
On the twenty eighth.
Twenty--
Billboard? They wanna put a billboard within the city limits? I don't know, man.
Mr. Vasquez, planning commissioner comments on Grand Plaza. What's that about? You want us to comment on that?
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking something about that.
Someone requested that.
Oh, someone requested that?
Yes.
No matter, was that you?
Nope.
No?
What was it?
I think that was me, because I heard that you guys had some issues with, you guys, well, Mr. Chavín's no longer here, so he didn't give you guys resolution to questions that were not answered.
On the Grand Plaza?
Yes, 'cause I wasn't, I wasn't on the planning commission when that happened, but I heard that you guys had a bunch of unresolved issues or unanswered questions, like bike pass and--
Mine, mine, mine was, and I was, I directed my concern to staff, meaning Mr. Finley was the bridge, remember during my quest--
And the bridge has been resolved?
No.
Yeah?
No.
That's on your bridge?
According to Mr. Finley, they have not resolved that.
Mark?
I really don't have the information on that.
Mario?
Praise. Anybody? Anyways, and the other one that I just heard today, which I hope you can clarify this for me, that they wanna jump on phase three and not come--
You mean phase three?
Phase three, uh-huh.
Well--
No, phase three and not do phase two?
It's called two A. They are jumping phase one B. What you see built there is one A.
Right.
They're jumping one B to start two A because they have some big box lease agreements.
The big companies.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Pending, yeah, or, or maybe even signed. So that's the reason. And then hopefully, one B will come back and fill in.
Okay.
Also, you mean, they're, they're jumping the project because they can't satisfy what the, the big bucks want on that project?
I guess so. They haven't come to an agreement.
They have a deadline.
Exactly.
Boxes, maybe? Is that what it is?
Yeah, the, one B is our smaller lease spaces, just like you see at the outlets now.
Got it.
So, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty sure they always had this idea about a power center, which are bigger box stores.
Correct.
Okay. And so that's what they--
That's good, I guess.
That's what they're shooting for at this point.
My comment was gonna be is that, I know there's some projects out there within the city of Callexico that, as a planning commission, we don't really need to be informed, but it would be nice to be informed when there is new business going up in Callexico. For example, the two obvious ones right now are--
One more.
Aldi.
Como?
Aldi, the, the store being built by Jack and the Box?
Yes.
Okay, that one, the one behind it? Behind the Jack and the Box? And the other one, the--
Panda Express.
Panda Express? I heard it from the public. I, I didn't hear anything from the city. So it'd be nice to--
It would be nice.
Be aware that salud is the, that if planning or whoever can inform this commission, that by the way, in case you see any projects anybody asks, these projects are now going up, that you don't tell us or you don't inform us that if something is, is still in the works, I understand. But when something has been finalized, yeah, courtesy.
Provide maybe an update, just a current, current project.
Yeah, if something is approved, but it hasn't been constructed, it would be good to know that that's gonna go on. Because by, by that time, there's no, there'd be, all issues have been resolved, even though they haven't, they would not have started construction. It'd be, it'd be good to know.
Like, like the Highway ninety-eight expansion, Caltrans is going to begin, and I didn't even know about it until I read it in the agenda, the city council agenda.
Which one was?
The Highway ninety-eight expansion. We were not even advised. And, I mean, we should be advised.
We should be at least informed. McGrew, McGrew Medical Center, they're, they're building a medical office right here at the end of Heber and ninety-eight.
That's another one. That's another one that--
Three.
That we have--
Those are, those are--
Next to McGrew.
Yeah.
But, elderly care.
Okay, the, the other two men, the other two centers?
Correct.
You had the El Centro Regional?
Yeah, yes.
And then the building that's going up, or what?
Correct.
Try to get you an update on current, current planning projects.
Okay. Any, anything going on on Jasper and Imperial for one eleven? That mega park? Was that dead?
Well, it was approved and, but we haven't had any submittals.
Okay.
Does that count?
No applications, so--
No, the city. Jasper, Jasper Road is a north boundary for Callexico.
One eleven and Jasper.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Actually, I was wondering--
Oh, sorry.
Not a problem. Can I get someone, the agenda? 'Cause Rami called me, I don't know if you guys know him, Rami Rashid. I think he has a property on Preston, and he had some plans he submitted to make a house into a triplex. Everything was approved. He's about a hundred thousand into it, and now they're saying that it, you can't have a triplex there. So he wanted to ask you guys if you guys can see if, what can be done as far as the zoning.
Well, we can ask for a presentation, see what, I don't know what the attorney--
Mr. Vasquez, do you know what, what's that about?
I, I'm not that familiar with, with the project. I, I know he's been in a couple of years, a couple of years ago, he was in. It is our one zone. I--
So he applied, so he asked for, for a zone change?
I, I don't know what Rami wants. He wants to figure out if he could get a zone change, because everything was approved